You're by open Board of Select, the meeting March 11th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. And yet, the sun is still out at the Rutland Public Library. This meeting is being videotaped for Rutland people as well as being broadcast later on YouTube. If anybody would like to watch it, could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Jump right into our appointments for 6:00 PM. We have a request by St. Patrick's for a one-day liquor license, and I believe Joe Becker is here for St. Patrick's. Welcome, Joe Becker.
Yeah, we're representing the committee that runs the fundraising for St. Patrick's parish, Broughton Blessings, which is held on April 27th after the fight. We plan on bringing 16 different breweries in for sampling and growing up some brats and having some great raffle prizes. So, we've submitted a one-day pouring permit for that event.
Is there any questions for Joe? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the one-day pouring permit for St. Patrick's Parish. For the date. What's the date, Joe?
April 27th.
April 27th. Second. That's it. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abby, they had everything in.
The only thing, the only pending question is the daily fee of $60.
Yep, Mayor and Chair. Make a motion, we waive the fee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Look at that. Is there an original to sign? Or is there anything to sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah!
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will. Thanks, Joe.
Do you know what breweries you have wind up, or is it still in the works?
We're still about over a month out, so we haven't finalized them, so I don't want to false advertise.
No worries.
How's that?
That's fine.
Local ones.
That's good.
Alright, thank you very much.
Great.
Thanks for coming, Joe. Good to see you.
Could I get a motion to sign Treasury Warrant 19 and Payroll?
Joe moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. And we have minutes.
Motion to accept February 25th. Minutes.
One thing on the minutes, we just have to add my name to the roll call vote for the executive session. Other than that, it looks fine.
Second.
Second with the edit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of February 28th, 2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Thank you. So, that's three, two, two abstentions. Alright, Soul Systems. My schedule, Mike, showed a phone call that ended up getting canceled for 4:00 PM. So, do we actually have anything with that?
Anna was here earlier, and I did see a car just drive down.
Okay.
I think we had a meeting at 3:30 that then just kind of got combined because everyone was there earlier.
Okay.
But, I mean, I can run down what was discussed at that meeting if you want, or we can wait until...
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So, in case Anna does walk in, like I said, we just saw a car drive by. Soul Systems met with myself, Willie Casinelli, the Building Commissioner, David George is the Town Planner, and the RDIC to discuss their proposed solar fields, both on Central Tree Road and on Maple Avenue. And for the board, these are the documents that were passed out. This is the Maple Avenue layout that's proposed and the Central Tree that's proposed. Each, solar field is going to be about 7.5 megawatts each, which is the max that's allowed under the state credit program currently.
7.5?
Yeah.
Didn't they just open the largest one in Winchton today?
Yes.
7.1?
Yes.
Wow.
The way that those maps are set is north is on top, and all of the panels will face south. That way, they make sure as the sun rises in the east and sets in the west, they still have the optimal sunshine throughout the day. And both solar fields are equipped with two battery, we'll call them battery packs, but battery stations. That way, if there's excess electricity generated during the day, it'll charge the battery stations, and then they can produce that electricity through the grid at night when the panels aren't regularly producing power.
Is the acreage on there?
Yes, I think somewhere at the bottom.
I don't see any acreage.
We can ask her when she gets here.
Yeah.
Let me see if you see it.
We are six to nine months out from construction, just due to the state's process on approving permits and applications for tie-ins to the National Grid system.
This is all unbuildable soil we've determined?
I mean, this one's close, right?
Right.
No, I guess not. It's the back of Maple Avenue.
I thought this was the hill in the round area.
That's the hill. That's the slope. Yeah.
And then this is the section that the science teachers use. I mean, I have some concerns about this section.
Where's the pond? It was right up against the...
No, because the pond's along Maple Ave.
No, the pond at the back.
There's a little one there. I thought there was one right off the school there. Is this the school right now?
Yeah, that's Central Tree. I think it's mostly wetlands here. I mean...
So, if you remember that couple, either the last meeting or the meeting before, we signed a okay-to-enter-the-property agreement, if you will. Nothing was found at either property. They were actually very pleasantly surprised at the remediation done on the Heights property. And there was absolutely nothing in the soil over on Central Tree, but we expected that to begin with anyway.
It was still lived there.
But those were some of the highlights from today's meeting, was just a going over what permitting process they need from the Planning Board, from the RDIC, from the Building Commissioner, and introductions.
So, did Anna expect to come over here? Did she know she was on the agenda?
Yes.
And she's at RDIC probably right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, so let's, we can hold off for her a little bit with appointments. We'll go straight into public comment. Yes? Come on up. Of course, now I see you walking in.
Anyways.
Reason here is I'm just looking for kind of an update as to what your thoughts are on whether or not you're going to continue the sewer and water more tour as of June, or, I guess, looking for more of an update as to what I'd place.
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry.
Cleve Blair, 8 Heritage Hill Drive.
Well, I think the most recent update you've got was the meeting that your committee had. I feel like, was that really just last week? Yeah.
Just last week. I have a little update or a synopsis to that, if maybe you want to hear from that first, and then we could, this is our first opportunity for the board to meet after the managed growth meeting and to discuss.
Well, we'll circle back to it with new business, but I mean, I think to answer Cleve's question, we got a lot of information last week. Joe might be able to speak a little bit more to it. We have a lot of options on the table relative to Water Sewer District, extending the moratorium, possibly putting something on to the warrant for annual town meeting as far as a bylaw. I think at this point, to answer your question, everything is on the table.
Everything...
Everything I just listed is on the table as a possibility.
Right, but is one of those, I didn't hear whether or not...
Yes. Extension of this moratorium is absolutely on the list of, on the short list of possibilities.
It is. And is there a possibility that may not get extended?
I mean, I'm only one vote, as you well know, so yes, you're looking at the five people who would vote that. We've had some discussion with the CMRPC rep who's working with us as to who sets the boundaries if we were to set a water sewer district. So, that needs to be cleared up, I think. There were some questions about that. And it's different, it might be different apparently, depending on how the town's structure is set up. So, yeah, we have, we still have a lot of questions to answer before we're about to do anything. As far as a timeline goes, anything that is going to go on the town meeting warrant, we're going to know by mid-April.
Alright, so, I'm looking at, actually, the reason I'm here is I'm looking to put some subdivisions. I want to get some extension permits for them, and I want to put them in. One of them's 26 lots, and the other one is Noble Hill, which, you know, that's, I'm probably three years away from even building that, but, you know, the problems, I mean, from the meeting that we had, you guys, of the open meeting that you had last June, I mean, the problems are obviously eye and eye. It's not really metered flow. So, what is the, is it strict? No way, absolutely, forget it, that I can't even file, I get denied at that point? Or would the board and as water and sewer commissioners and Joe be willing to look at a few? What's, one is 26-lot subdivision. It can be water and sewer, it can be well and septic. I prefer it to be water and sewer. It doesn't add a whole lot. 26 lots, in my opinion, it puts about 5,000 gallons a day in the system. It's not a big deal, but would you be open to any of that, or do I...
The moratorium was not open to any exceptions when we set it. I can't answer for every professional in the room, but at this point, with a moratorium in place, Joe would have no choice but to deny something like that. I, I'm a little, are you planning on going to the Planning Board with a definitive subdivision that has water sewer, that you've already designed for water sewer, but you don't have an option for septic and well?
I have, right now, I have a subdivision that was approved in 2008. I filed for a sewer extension permit and got it from the town back in 2008. At that time, it's under 10 lots, so the DEP didn't weigh in on those. It was just signed by the town. There was a moratorium at the time. Joe Becker was here. He could, he could, they denied the sewer extension permit to start with, which I commenced the lawsuit. They ended up giving me the sewer extension permit. Now, I'm going to, I want to build that, but I don't have the sewer extension permit any longer. I mean, I don't, you know, because it's going to change. Where does, how do I, where does that stand?
Okay.
Just a question. Do you mind if I, who is the sewer extension permit with? Is that with the town, or is that with DCR?
The town.
The town.
So, the permit issued by the town predates the moratorium? Is that what you're...
It predates, it's during, was during the first moratorium back in the late 2000s.
And it was for 10 lots, but, under 10 lots, but now you're looking at 6 lots?
That's a whole different one. This is, I, I'm sorry to confuse you guys. I have a 6-lot subdivision that I have approved, and I'm going to redesign it. But at the time, I asked for a sewer extension permit, they didn't give it to me. It's what started that entire lawsuit, that the town ended up stepping in my shoes and suing the DCR, and he ended up with a contract. It was a long thing that ended in 2015 or 16, when I received the sewer extension permit for Bryce Estates. Part of that, I had a sewer extension permit that I had, that would start of the whole lawsuit for Maple Hill Estates. Now, is that still good, or can I still use that, or, I mean...
I think we need to have a conversation on what, what the CMRPC report is telling us first.
Yeah, it's two different questions.
Yeah.
You're... Yeah, it's...
First and foremost, your initial question was, is the town planning on maintaining the sewer moratorium, or are they going to lift the moratorium?
Right.
So, that sets the pace for everything you do, is what you're trying to apply. So, it says if the town were not to go forward with the sewer moratorium in June, none of this whole point would be moot.
Correct?
Right.
Because then you would just proceed with your sewer extension permits, and you would begin your design process.
Right. That's correct.
And what I can tell you to date is, there's three or four different things in play that will genuinely affect the sewer moratorium. First and foremost is the water and sewer rate structure. Until that's squared away, and the town can commit to making some long-term water and sewer system repairs, I don't know if, you know, going with the moratorium is wise or not wise. We also have the pending discussions with DCR on our next allotment for how much we can continue to put into their system. And then the final thing is what Selectman Stillings was referring to as the analysis for town build-out. And they've linked most of the analysis for town build-out directly to the water and sewer limitations in town at this time. So, unfortunately, if I were to give you a straight answer, I can't. Until the, the town has made a decision on the build-out analysis and how they want to proceed with what's been recommended by the planners, until we've figured out what we're going to do with our billing structure, and until, unless we have some inkling as to what's going on with DCR, the answer would be immediately no, because there just, there's too many balls in the air to give you a straight answer. So, then you went on to say you're looking for an interim solution, because you have so much on the table. From a business standpoint, would the town be able to possibly consider opening the door for some?
That's what I was, yep.
And I don't know, that would be a conversation the Water and Sewer Board would probably want to do an executive session and get back to you. I would imagine they'd want to do it consistently with other people who have interest in town, but I don't know. Did I get it all?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Absolutely. So, those, so he pretty much answered my question. We don't really have, you don't really know.
Well, in all fairness, especially on the wastewater side...
We're in some trouble, and we have to square that away.
I agree, but the trouble's eye and eye, not really metered flow. So, I mean, if you added 100 houses, in reality, 100 houses to it is 20,000 gallons a day. Your problem is certainly not 20,000 gallons a day. It's eye and eye. It is, I mean, I look at the charts, I've looked at the flows, I've looked at, and I do this in a lot of towns, and I tell you, it's not, the problem is not metered flow, the problem is eye and eye. And then the amount of, amount of permits that are being put on, and the amount of metered flow that's going into the system right now is just nothing. What is it, 20 houses a year? 25 houses a year?
Cleve, every foot of pipeline that has been put in for one of your developments ultimately has been taken by the town and ultimately needs eye and eye maintenance every single year. So, to say that new development doesn't affect the actual problem, as you state, of eye and eye, is patently false.
So, in Rolling Ridge Estates, in Bryce Estates, in Bear Hill Estates, in Laurel Acres, how much eye and eye are you working with?
You're mentioning new places, but as you well know, eye and eye continues forever, it continues for many, many years. And the biggest issues we are having right now are with some of our oldest developments, some of which were put in by your company.
Hmm, I think it's, I think it's Highland Park, and that wasn't my company.
Some of which were put in by your company.
My family, maybe, but not my company. My Uncle Ralph.
Little bit of semantics there.
Do you want to try and have to meet collectively as the Water and Sewer Board and get back to him about how they want to proceed?
I think maybe you and Mike can have a discussion, possibly even rope in K and P. Off the top, it doesn't sound to me like an executive session discussion. It actually sounds like an open water sewer commissioner discussion as to whether or not...
So, what would go on the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Alright.
We need to have a water sewer commissioner meeting anyway. It's certainly something that's been, you know, on the list prior to town meetings, so that we're starting to get all of our ducks in a row. We just, as he says, a lot of balls in the air, a lot, lot going on.
Can I ask one more question? What has been done since last June as far as eye and eye removal? Do you know?
Well, I mean, Joe's going to be the best person to answer that, but he's actively working with Weston and Sampson right now on multiple fronts.
Joe just started. I mean, what did Gary do?
He has a lot going on.
What did Gary do for, you know, six months before he got here? Before Joe got here?
Is the question trying to ascertain if we...
I'm just trying, I'm just wondering if, if there was any eye and eye removal done last, from last June on to, because the eye and eye removal is really what's going to fix the problem. I mean, it's, it's no question about it. So, it's a straightforward question.
Matter of opinion. Okay.
Two quick things. There's, I think we can collectively agree that removal of inflow and infiltration will build additional system capacity. I think also along the lines of what Mr. Stillings is referencing in the total build-out for the town, that number is still finite, and we can't get around that. What I can tell you is, we've done minimal eye eye since I've been here in the last two months, you know, trying to control eye eye. I have met with Weston and Sampson, and we're starting to develop some plans. We've also been talking with DCR, because they also control a lot of sewer main in town that does affect eye eye that isn't in our direct control. So, we've been working with them quite a bit.
Alright, so, really, nothing?
Really, it's a lot of stuff in progress. I, as far as the deadlines go, I mean, I think you've got some pretty hard deadlines in front of you that you're very aware of, which is town meeting. That's, that's our sort of hard target right now for a lot of things.
Town meeting would be where you talk about whether or not to extend the moratorium?
It would be managed growth by law discussions, which came up during the meeting last week.
All those again?
Yes. Kind of wild, Cleve.
There we go. Alright, so, now by managed growth by law, does that mean like building permit caps and things like that?
Yes.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Okay.
It's one of other, I mean, there's at least six or seven options that were mentioned from Central Mass. So, and I'm going to, I'd like to highlight what they are, and I asked that the PowerPoint be presented, and everyone's behind her.
Great.
So, it's online. Cleve, if you haven't seen it, the CMRPC's study, or at least their presentation, it's on the town website.
Okay.
In a PowerPoint form, kind of bullet points.
I didn't know it was there. Thanks, I'll take a look at it. Yeah.
Lot of different things.
And if you want to stay for new business, I think we'll be talking about it more at that point, too. It's a little farther down, or you can leave and come back if you wanted to.
I mean, what do you, timeframe, like an hour, or?
30 minutes.
Talking about the CMRPC?
Yep, it's under new business. If you look at the agenda, which is behind you, there it is.
Behind set.
Do we have an extra PowerPoint, Mike, that we could maybe give them?
Sure.
Or Abby?
Alright, we're running a little late. Anna?
Yes.
Hey, come on up. You can stay there.
Okay.
There's actually a microphone above you, or you can come up, whatever is more appropriate to your situation.
If this is good, yeah. Sorry, we're late.
No, it's fine. I apologize. We did, we should sort of move forward, and that went a little longer. But, so, Nusis from Soul System, welcome.
Thank you.
You've been here for hours now already.
Yes. We've, we've been around talking with as many folks at the town as we can to figure out how best to move forward with our projects and ensure that the development of these projects goes well for solar. And this is my colleague, Rennie Friedman. He works on our development side as well. I'm the commercial lead for the project, so I've been the one interacting with you guys the most, but Rennie is involved in all things technical and development-related, so the interconnection applications, and will be involved with David George on the planning side for permits and zoning approvals and everything like that. So, while we're here, we just wanted to stop by and say hi and put a face to some names that we hope that you're hearing about in the future. So, we're excited about the solar project.
And Mike gave us a high level of what's been happening since 3:30, when everything started?
Yeah, yeah.
Are there PDF, electronic, anything, copies of these maps that we can send out to people? The maps that we receive?
Yeah. Yeah, we, those are just the latest concept plans that we have right now.
Yeah.
I'd be a little hesitant to send them out too far, because they are still very preliminary.
Okay.
So, you know, in general, the final product will look very similar to that in all likelihood, but it might be a little different here and there. So, I can certainly, we can certainly provide PDFs, but I would ask to maybe not send them out on a broadcast, kind of...
Okay, so we won't post them online, but for our office to have, so that we can have discussions about them?
That would be absolutely acceptable, yep.
That would be great.
And the best way is just, Mike, get them over to you?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. We can send those over. Not a problem.
Okay, so, huge, 7.5, we just heard, megawatts?
Each.
Each, yeah. 15 total.
And we just saw in the news today, Winchton opened, largest in the state so far, 7.1. You're trying to break records? Put Rutland on the...
That's the plan.
Literal.
We're making them as, as big as we possibly can.
What is the acreage on these?
I believe it's 28 and a half acres for each site.
Yeah, boy, I do not know off the top of my head, but in general, 5 acres per minute or what? Yeah, probably a little bit bigger, 30.
30 acres, roughly.
Yeah.
And when it comes to the clearcutting, how is that working on each site? Who's managing that? Do you know that yet?
I believe we've talked about the town possibly managing that and keeping that for yourselves, but...
RDIC did want to be the one in charge of the clearcutting at the Heights property.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
We didn't, I don't think the Central Tree Road came up at our meeting today, but we can look at that.
Okay.
Is there going to be clearcutting at Central Tree? Because you're right up along the watershed there.
Yeah, there will be clearcutting. We're going to keep, and you can see on the plan, too, there's a pretty well-established offset there from the pond, so we're going to make sure to maintain. And again, I apologize, I don't have the top of my head what it is, but I think it's between 100 and 200 feet minimum offset there from the pond.
That's minimum across both projects, all perimeter?
Somebody's looking for it.
About 100-plus feet?
No, just, just, just from the pond on the Central Tree Road site, yeah.
What's the smallest?
Noted, I don't see it.
Perimeter you've got as far as buffer?
From a property line?
From, yeah, sure, from a property line.
I'd have to, I don't recall off the top of my head. It'll certainly comply with whatever the, you know, local zoning ordinance has for it. I don't believe we're going to be requesting any variances or waivers for offsets or anything like that. But I apologize, I don't have the top of my head exactly.
Just a question that was raised on these maps that show, that were given out, the scale as to the size of the drawings versus, it's a scale as noted, but there doesn't seem to be a...
Yeah, I actually noticed that today, too, when I was trying to figure out the scale. Let me, let me do this, let me reach back out to our consultants, have them add a scale.
And I'll send that out.
Send them over to you.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I thought the same thing. I saw it today.
Maybe double-check the address on that Central Tree map. I think it's around 60, I grew up at 63 Central Tree, and that's where you say the site is. I think it's around 60, I grew up at 63 Central Tree, and that's where you say the site is. So it's probably more like 61.
I wonder, yeah, we'll check that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we know?
Yeah.
Can we, and I don't know who's the right agency to do this. Let's ask you first, are you the right agency to reach out to Central Tree Middle School? They use a significant portion of the town-owned land that abuts the Heights property. Also town-owned, but you know, there's kind of a difference there. And they work backwards in it doing various science projects. I think they have one particular teacher who's very well acquainted with the topography. And we would love to get, I would love to get his feedback, just to ensure we're, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, if we can, if we can have their contact information, we'd definitely be the right people to reach out.
I'm going to send it to him and he'll send it to you.
Perfect.
Or you can give me cards or whatever.
Yeah.
Great.
Did anyone speak with the neighbors on Central Tree, let them know that this is coming?
We haven't done any public outreach yet. Again, we're still very preliminary in the project. We absolutely are going to do that as part of the project, but we're still so early on. Again, kind of the same reason why I didn't want to distribute those PDFs. We're still kind of formulating some answers on our side, so. But we absolutely will be doing a public outreach program for the projects.
No pressure, but timeline, because you now are on camera. This goes out to the whole town, they can watch it whenever they want on YouTube, I know.
Fair enough. So the biggest driver of timeline right now is the interconnection process. We just entered our system impact analysis phase with National Grid. Ballpark that can take anywhere from six to nine months. And then they get back to us with a nice document that says, here's how much your interconnection upgrades are going to cost, and here's how long it's going to take us to build up. And us being National Grid. So this is for their upgrades on their side of the meter, whether they have to run new pole lines or upgrade things at the substation or things of that nature. So that's the longest lead time. Again, where we're at right now is probably about six to nine months to get to where we get that form back from them. We'll be using that time to do our portion of the development of the project. Not physical construction, but finalizing our design, doing our site, doing our site studies, surveys, wetland delineations, public outreach, things like that. And then submitting the site plans and getting approvals in place so that those two kind of endpoints will line up as close as possible. But as far as the timeline for bringing the system online, it's very difficult to say because I don't know what the results of that interconnection analysis are going to come back to say. This area is very saturated with solar, as far as what's on the lines, I'm sure everyone here knows. So those upgrades can be fairly substantial, both in cost and time. So very hard for me to commit to a date when it's going to be online by the state because I don't know what the National Grid timeline is for them to construct their improvements.
If you had your best case scenario and you were at six months, that's September. At that point, in your ideal world, what would you be doing in September?
If the, if the ISA, so the Interconnection Service Agreement came back and the number for the cost of the interconnection upgrades looked good, it didn't kill the project or turn it totally upside down, and their timeframe was, you know, these improvements can be constructed within nine months, we would probably start going to work. It may not come back that favorable. You know, it could take one year, two years longer. So again, everything kind of hinges on that. That's kind of been the biggest unknown from day one of these projects. But what we want to do now is get our designs and approvals in place so that we're ready to go when we get that letter back either way. So that way, if it's good, we can proceed forward with, you know, full development of the site. If it's not as good as we want, we can wait or reevaluate or figure out what we need to do to make the project work.
So the reason I'm pressing this is because your best case scenario is sort of the worst case scenario for the abutters in terms of needing to prepare for this and get ready for it. So again, if September came back with good news on all fronts, you're saying you'd probably just get started, you'd want to try to get something in prior to the weather changing. However, you've now just heard that you've got two sites where the town wants to do its own clear cutting. So how would that work in?
So when, and just remind, no, when the town's saying the town wants to do the clear cutting, the town would actually hire the contractors and, or use.
No, we totally do it. We go out, I have my own.
Oh, that sounds great.
Why do you think they elected us?
Handy with the chainsaw. So for the town to actually manage that process, then, is that?
Yeah.
I mean, that's something we would absolutely work with the town on. That's totally fine, acceptable, probably preferable. So we would try to work and, you know, we're going to work hand to hand with the town on both these projects as we move forward and always, so that we can, you know, plan the best that we possibly can so that when, when we're at that point and everything comes back great and roses, we said, okay, wow, we can actually get started on this sooner than we thought maybe. Certainly acknowledging there's going to be some lead time there. But we're going to use, you know, those next six months, nine months to kind of coordinate those efforts as best we can. So everything's kind of teed up and ready to go.
Okay, so I think what you're answering me is there's no reason for the town to think that it's going to have to start clear cutting that site, particularly at Central Tree, in September because all of a sudden you got a signed paper and everything looked really great and you needed to move fast. Because we would probably, you know, Venus Book of Law doesn't move like that, as you know.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it comes back great, we're ready to go in September and that's the holdup, I think that's a great situation for the projects to be.
Okay.
That would be fantastic. But yeah, we'll work closely with the town to be able to get a better understanding on our end, what those timelines look like, how much lead time does everybody need? You know, what other things can we do on our end to put in the best position possible?
And ideally throughout that six to nine months, we're getting some sort of indication from National Grid what the end results are going to be. And so that's where, you know, we're going to be in communication with the town anyways on the planning and zoning, you know, site plan review process that we can keep you all abreast of what's going on there so that we, you know, know what that timeline is going to look like, so.
So it's, you'll have, hopefully have some feedback along the waiting period from National Grid? Or a sense of how they're looking? I mean, because if, I'm not trying to be pessimistic, but I'm also hearing there is an option that National Grid comes back and says it's going to cost a ton to upgrade and it's just not feasible to make the pro, to, like you said, turns a project upside down. So that's still always kind of a back burner, absolute worst case scenario? And there's no way to work with National Grid around that, or?
You, there's ways to work with them as, and it might be that the system size we put forth. There's a trigger point, it's somewhere in, and we can do, say, a five megawatt system on Central Tree Road, but not a 7.5.
You could scale it a little bit.
Yeah, that's one option, we've seen that happen before. So there are ways to work with them on it. But, you know, really, we won't know for certain until we get that final ISA back from them. But as Anna did mention, a lot of times what they'll do is, when they're at a point in the analysis that they know if you're going to need, and I'm not going to use the right technical term, so I'm not even going to try, but if you're going to need substation upgrades, or kind of like a bigger thing, they'll let you know that. You won't know exactly what it's going to be or the, you know, the nuts and bolts of it, but they'll try to give you as much heads up as possible to say, hey.
This is going to be a significant.
This is going to be significant, do you want us to keep going?
Yeah.
And then, of course, we'll ask the question, what does significant mean? And they'll say, well, we don't know. So we'll say, okay, yeah, keep going. But, you know, they do try to give you that advance notice if possible.
Yeah.
So it just sounds like keeping everybody in the loop. You guys are really kind of spearheading all of that, right? You're a National Grid side and then can work with us in the town as to how the timeline's looking to make sure we're doing everything we can as proactively as possible, but not in advance of anything.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Skip, looks like you have a question.
Oh, I have plenty, but, no.
No.
I was told that there was not that much space left on the grid. You're talking 7.5 and a 7.5? That's 15, that's 16, no. I'm told there's not that much out there.
Yeah, we've known from day one of the project that interconnection was going to be the biggest hurdle. It is a challenge. The projects are fairly robust, given the state incentive program of the costs that they can handle, but even they have a limit to them at some point. But again, we won't know until we pursue forward down this path, and it could be that one site is better than the other and maybe there's some opportunities there. But that's, you know, that's why we're going down the path now and having National Grid do the full analysis to tell us what it really is, what it really does look like.
Kind of just started the analysis program, right?
We just started our system impact analysis, yeah. The last three or four months, we've been going through the application process, answering questions, screening. The screening is now done, 100% through that, have their approval on that, and now we've moved forward with the system impact studies.
Is there any pending legislation or action at the State House that's going to affect this one way or the other? Make you wait? No?
No, there isn't. Anything, yeah, no, there's no legislation there. To address the issue that you're talking about, there have been some conversations around how do we work with the utilities? Because across the state, there's a lot of solar that's going to be put online. And so the utilities are aware of that. Some areas are different from others, but I think that's something that may be brought up in the legislature, but don't know exactly what that'll look like. But nothing that's going to negatively impact the projects that's out there right now.
All right, anybody else? We're good. Thank you for staying so long.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We were at a great meeting, but it was about condos. And then we realized we were on.
We didn't realize it was on that area. We walked in and we were like, oh, this is for Soul Systems? And they were like, you're not at the right place. And we're like, okay, great.
And I saw when I walked in, but I thought it was, I didn't know who was over there. I thought RDIC or something. Sorry, I would have grabbed you on my way in.
It's fine, no, it's fine, it's fine.
One of the HOAs is having a meeting over there.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We found it.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
You were out just long enough to no longer have to worry about, worry about traffic.
Yeah, there you go.
Perfect. And we'll send over, I'll get some updated plans with a scale on them that actually works. Mike, I'll get those.
Perfect.
Over to you. We do have some business cards, we're happy to leave them.
Sure. Yeah, we don't mind.
Please do.
We're going to sharpen our saws and.
Yeah, just let me know who needs to call.
And we'll, like, you know, when we head out, so you can come out for the photo op.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
When one of us slices a bigger off.
Thank you.
Actually, Skip could do it.
It was so nice to meet you, thank you.
Nice to meet you guys. We're glad we could do.
Thank you. Good to see you, yeah, thank you.
And you just let me know about the contact information for the school? Love to.
Awesome, thanks, Anna.
Oh.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, you guys are both based in DC? Are you flying out tonight?
I'm, I actually live in San Diego.
Oh, dear.
So I used, our headquarters in DC. I flew in this morning and we're sticking around for a couple more days for some other projects that we're working on, so.
Great.
Wanted to come and see you guys first.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Yeah, appreciate it.
Thanks, it was nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good one.
Have a good evening.
Nice to meet you.
All right, I would have gone to department updates, but our two department heads have left the room. So I guess they're going to have to wait. Oh, oh, he's back. Oh, you heard me. Do you want to go first, Seth?
Thank you.
I don't have to, I don't know, I mean, if I executive session.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Joe, do you have a department update, or are you also here for?
I don't, I just came for a couple.
Excellent, onward to Mike.
Just a couple of quick things. We got the bylaws that were passed at the fall town meeting back from the Attorney General's office. The marijuana bylaw was approved with no changes. The stormwater management bylaw had the criminal, criminal infraction section of it removed, and the rest was passed. So that is where we currently stand on the bylaws. That was returned from town meeting. We have some employment changes happening in the town hall annex. This is Abby's last meeting with us. But we have the position posted internally and we're legally required to have that posted for 10 days. The current plan that we're looking at is to combine the administrative secretary position with the general secretary position and make the position a 32-hour rather than a 16. On the benefit side, it is a wash because one of the positions was already receiving benefits. And it makes things more efficient overall in the end, just to have one person there rather than trying to figure out who's in the morning, who's in the afternoon, what voicemail is a call going to and things like that. So that should be good there, and we should have an update for you there come the next one, meeting, that is. We did receive some interest for the building committee. We still have about a couple of days left that we said that that would be open for. We have four or five people who are interested. We had three emailed and then one internal employee. So four, so far. So once that's finalized again at the next meeting, we'll have some people before you guys to appoint to that one as well. To, just before the last board of selectmen meeting, I sent out an email to every secretary in the governor's cabinet, inviting them out to come visit Rutland. And we've had three secretaries respond saying that they're coming out to see us. Secretary Acosta, who's the secretary of labor and workforce development, is coming out. That one is still being scheduled, but we're looking at April 1st in the afternoon. At that time, that was what the secretary's office threw out. But again, we're still working on scheduling. Secretary Mary Lou Sudders also reached out. She's the secretary of health and human services in the state. They oversee elders affairs, so anything that deals with senior centers or things like that. Child services falls under them. And a couple, there's probably about 20 different state agencies that falls under Secretary Sudders. Sudders, excuse me. And the other big one is veteran services, that also falls under her. And then today, we received word from Deputy Secretary McGorthy. He is the deputy underneath Secretary McKinney, who is the new Jay Ash. So we'll have the deputy secretary, who's the second in command for the executive office of housing and economic development, come out here as well. Again, we just got that one today. So as these come in, if these are people who you'd like to sit down with as well, let me know and we can work the scheduling around that. Again, none of these three are set yet, so if there's a time that works best for you versus another, we can certainly throw that out there and leave it open. But at least these people are coming out to Rutland so they can get a feel for what we're dealing with out here and see if there's any way that we can make connection with something that they're doing out there.
Nice.
Thank you.
And those are the general updates on the budget side of things. Fincom meetings have started on Thursday nights and will continue every Thursday night at 7 o'clock from now until town meeting. Over in the small conference room here in the library, Laura and I are working on getting a set schedule out. But the first one will be this Thursday. Most likely with fire, and we're looking to see if Rec, Safe Place, and one other department can come. But that's what we're currently thinking there. And with that, I mean, once those continue, we'll get more of an update as things go closer. And in terms of the famous photo contest that we started, we do have our first, second, and third place winners. We'll have a printout for them for you for the next meeting. But because there were some interesting choices, we had between 10 and 15 submissions. Right, Abby? Yeah. We've got some talented photographers in town. The first place winner, well, if you're watching and you realize that this is your picture based on the description, congratulations. But the first place winner was a nice picture of Glenwood Street, Drive Street?
Road.
Road, one of them. From up on a hill, you could see the silo and the barn and then the two hills with fall foliage in the background. So that one was a really nice picture. The second picture was entitled Rutland, My Home. It was a picture of some cows grazing in a field. And the third picture, the third place picture, was a, actually a before and after combined together of the rail trail, the rail trail midsummer and then the rail trail midwinter in the same exact spot. And you can see the green growing over versus what it's like in the wintertime, so we thought those were cool. So those will be up on the town's Facebook page. The first place winner will be on the town report. And if there's anything else where we can put them, we'll take a look. And that is it for the town administrator report.
Do we have budget books?
For the town?
Yeah, for us.
I can get those for you, yeah.
Okay.
For sure.
And then I think probably we should do in anticipation, because we're going to be co-posted, right? For every Thursday, just in case of a quorum. Ideally, if somebody, sadly not Abby, somebody could send out wherever we are with the budget that day.
Yeah.
Maybe by Tuesday, Wednesday morning, something like that. So people have time to take a look at it by Thursday and know what they're doing.
Sure.
Yeah, do you guys want anything else for budgets?
No.
No. The, ideally, the schedule of who is on.
Will be sent out to all of you.
Also be on the website, like, agenda or whatever.
Yeah, and if you look at the bottom of the selectments, we're going to start putting who's coming up for what, just as a FYI informational type thing. So this week, we didn't have the schedule yet, so it just says it's going to be on Thursday, so.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that that was the hope going forward. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, on to new business. We have the new senior center committee with a charge, and I think there is a draft of that.
Yes.
I just lost, oh, there it is.
Who wrote it?
I did.
Did you reference any other, anybody else's similar charge?
Yes.
Or did you?
Yep. That's why if you see anything that you think should be changed, I kind of took this off of a couple others I saw and then just pulled bits and pieces, so.
No, I'm good with it.
Can I ask for clarification? Is the hope that this is a charge to look at a new senior center or existing space senior center, or is anything open?
It's, this is an exploratory group to figure out which one of those to use. We've had suggestions to just rearrange the spaces that we have. Some suggestions to build new and some suggestions to keep as is. So this is really just to evaluate those three options and see what we have from there.
So everything's on the table?
Well, it says it's for the plan for a future location of a senior center.
Yeah, basically to see if it's feasible. I put that because I figured a future location just means the location they're at in the future rather than just a new location that they could be at in the future. But I'm happy to change the wording.
You want a motion to approve this?
Yes, please.
So do. I make a motion to approve the new senior center committee charge.
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
Next, Mike.
Um, Mike, can we get this out? Abby, can we, I don't even know who to ask. Can we get this out as a press release?
Sure.
And then also a website, et cetera, great.
Yep.
Since the press is not here, right?
Well, they could be watching.
They could be watching, that's true. Alright, Wachusett Regional School District Field, it's actually the High School Field, Letter of Support. You have this draft as well. I think, um, Mike had given you the overview of what's going on here. So their plan is to use E and D funds, which is excess and deficiency. It's essentially their savings account. Doesn't have the same requirements as a stabilization fund, but it does have some limitations, one of which is they can take out a quarter of a million dollars from it. However, they cannot do that if any of the towns oppose it. I actually haven't heard from the other towns.
Same.
Okay.
So they're blackmailing us, is what they're doing.
No.
Oh, you say, huh?
Skip, I would've.
If we approved the new field, redoing the whole new field, and if we don't send this letter down through, you know, then it's gonna be taxed to us. But they're using money that they've been telling us they didn't have to begin with.
So I, it's funny, and Skip, you know, I have kids in the district, but I've fought the district every year for a fair budget. I will honest-to-God say that for a budget of their size, they don't actually carry enough in excess and deficiency, and they never have. And we've certainly had years where we, as the towns, demanded that they take E and D, and put it towards the budget, the way we have to sometimes put free cash towards the budget, towards the budget when it's a dire circumstance. In this case...
Which is not a good move.
No, of course not. But in this case, I'm sitting here thinking, ultimately, this is our money, the town's money. The field is in rough shape, to the point where probably we're looking at verging on a lawsuit, or the students at a twenty-two-hundred school, uh, twenty-two-student high school not being able to use it at all because of its condition. I, I feel okay with this one. They're using money that was ours, that they've been saving, that they could've used for other things. They needed us, they needed something to be able to afford this. And in the absence of getting overrides, debt exclusions, capital exclusions from all five towns, which failed miserably last year, I, it was, it's a fair option, of all the things, I don't...
How does this, how does this fare with the vote that we had at the, uh, was it the Fall Town Meeting? When they were looking for money for the, uh, the upper field? The people said no?
That was the annual town meeting, and so I wanna say Paxton had already failed it at that point, so it was going nowhere. And then our town failed it as well. Nobody wanted to increase their taxes in order to pay for that field, that's what we were asking.
I still feel that way. But, I mean, the people had a voice, they said no.
Right.
I, just for clarification too, because this is taking out of E and D rather than a debt exclusion, like they proposed at the Fall last year, the only way to, um, vote against this would be to hold a special town meeting, because of when, it's an X amount of days after the school committee votes, and that falls before Town Meeting. So the only way to basically block it would be one of the member towns to call a special town meeting to vote, just to block this item.
Sorry, I made it sound like we could block it, we can't.
What's the, uh, what's the cost, if any, to the taxpayer for signing this letter?
This is money within their existing funds being diverted from whatever they might've used it for.
Yeah, we could...
It's money they've already taken to us.
Funds that we still wanna argue, because they want five-hundred thousand from us in excess, we haven't remedied yet, right? So, I mean...
For the upcoming budget. So, this argument is they're using their savings to pay for what is, I think rightly called a capital expenditure. It's absolutely capital.
So, much, much better way of spending the money than putting it towards a budget, which just increases the issue of funding in the budget. Because you have to come up with that same amount of money next year, plus the increase. So, I'd much rather see it used for the field than put towards a budget.
But they're gonna come back at us and say, "We need more money in R and D."
That's right, because they, they asked for six hundred, it's gonna be more, right?
Well...
What's gonna happen next year, or what's gonna happen when they fall short?
I mean, those hypotheticals we've had come up every year, you're absolutely right. As far as what Skip is saying, the budget that they presented to us is unlikely to go any higher. It's sort of our worst-case scenario budget, because it's Governor's numbers. They mentioned to us that night that they came, that they were looking at a little bit of savings from a health insurance number that came in better, which is great. So to your point, unless something dramatic happens, this should be what we got, or is our worst-case number. It's not a great number, uh, but I don't see it getting worse than that, based on this, this is separate.
Yeah, okay. But, I just, I gotta be honest with you, I'm not in favor of signing it. I mean, you got three, four other people here that wanna sign this letter, and go right ahead.
I'm not in favor either, Skip. I think if, if football suddenly become that dangerous, that you need million-dollar fields, then shut it down.
Yes, I agree. I played on the regular dirt.
Not it.
When I was a kid.
So this isn't just about football, this is a multi-use field, it's used by every student during physical education. So, I, I agree with you, if it were just football, I think we'd be having a very different conversation.
Do exercise on this special dirt, doing jumping jacks and whatever, you do that on hot surface.
That's right.
I, I just don't get it. You do it in the gym when the weather's too bad outside.
I mean, I also look at it as, we're a district of almost twenty-two-hundred kids that are going to that high school, and any other high school in Massachusetts, in, especially of that size, has this caliber field.
They do?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Yeah. If not, a, a higher caliber field, in some cases. So, I just think that it's, for a school of that, of that, of that size, that it's...
The superintendent talked about it at the, uh, the mini-meeting we had, they're saying that Wachusett is being farmed out to other colleges, but I don't think that's gonna, which can generate some income for the district, but I don't think six-hundred thousand dollars level.
Well, they got that quote down, last year it was almost six-fifty that they wanted, right? Six-hundred fifty, and now I thought the quote they had this year was sub-five.
It's a better quote right now, and I don't know why. I, I mean, Skip, to your point, I think these arguments are being had across the state, I think, and I know this doesn't affect us specifically, but on Martha's Vineyard, where you think they can do whatever they want money-wise, they had a huge argument when it came to the environmental concerns, and there were people who were screaming that they wanted natural turf. When they ended up doing the economics of it, it turned out that the artificial turf fields last longer with the right maintenance. So this field has been kept alive for a little over its expected lifespan, it's been twelve years, I guess now. And I don't think that our district, knowing our budget situation, typically ever considered doing anything but artificial turf. But it's, it's absolutely where the majority of the towns are going, because of weather concerns, because of drainage. I was actually at a football game in Northbridge in November, and it got to the point where they were talking about stopping the game for fear, and it was football, but for fear the players were gonna hurt themselves, because the ground had frozen and thawed. And it was, it looked terrible, it looked terrible, and unplayable. Anyway, it's a big high school, it's a capital expense for a big high school, it's expected. We've been kinda putting it off for a while. They have lots of ways that they could fund it. Obviously, I think what we threw around that really sounded like the ideal was, why don't we have some big corporate sponsor?
Yeah.
But there are burdens that come with the corporate sponsorships, and so I think that that was not pursued maybe as strongly as some people wanted them to.
We gotta do something about the tax, tax problem. A cheapo, you know?
Well, this is the cheapo version. This is without doubt a cheapo version. This is not asking us for any more money, this is saying, "Look, this is money we didn't use for various reasons, we're gonna use our savings."
I say, "Okay, great, now that you say you got two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, good. Cut that into the, the five-hundred-thousand-dollar bill that you just gave us, right? Because you're going over by half a million, and then we can worry about finding the two-hundred-and-fifty for that. You gotta pay the bills first, you know? Oh, it's a twelve-year-old field, big deal, my shoes are twelve years old, they're just, they're fine, right? They've just broken in. The twelve-year-old field, they crying bloody murder, oh my God, what are we gonna do? Twelve-year-old grass, I don't know. Call, call vote, vote.
Uh, well, I have a motion either way. So remember, this is just a support letter. Should this letter not go out, it doesn't actually change what they're about to do, unless...
Yeah.
Somebody from the board wanted to begin a process of a special town meeting, which would also have to be a board vote.
Yeah, just, again, for the logistics side of things, if either this gets voted no, or nothing happens in the end with it, unless a town meeting, a special town meeting is called in one of the member towns, and any one of them votes no, then it's considered a de facto yes from every other town. It's what's written in their district agreement that they have with the town.
And it's not specifically about the field, it's district agreement relative to use of E and D funds. Um, I get it, everybody's concerned, this is a support letter, the board as a whole does not have to support this for this to continue to go on. And, and it might come up at Town Meeting, but it's not relevant to the upcoming budget season, if that makes sense, their budget.
So we don't, we don't even have to make a motion on that, we can just let it...
We do not have to send a support letter, no.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Does that affect their foundation or insurance?
It affects their bond rating.
It does?
Yeah. Their E and D has consistently been too low. I mean, their, their goal is to keep it at about one percent. They haven't hit one percent in, as long as I can remember. They're close to it now, um, which is great, and very unusual for them, for the past decade or so.
No, but I meant the accreditation for the, the...
Oh, for the...
The schools, the school itself?
I wouldn't think so.
No, I don't think so.
I wouldn't think so, because physical education has other options. I mean, it certainly affects sports.
And I didn't know if it, uh, if they had, it affected their insurance premiums, and so would you be biting yourself on the backside by not?
There is no question that having had these conversations in public session as long as they have, talking about the, what's the right word, Seth? I'm looking at you, I don't know why. Talking about the base and the padding that's under not being up to standard these days for, for concussion? Thank you for giving me the words. But, yeah, yeah, you know, and we have these discussions here too, right? You get to a point where when you stop taking care of something, you're running the risk of lawsuits. Yes, that, this, there's no question that that should be a concern for their insurance company, if it wasn't already. Particularly when they've been asking now for a couple of years to replace it, and they're not doing it, so. But again, I get it, I get, if the board doesn't wanna sign a support letter, we're gonna move on. We're moving on?
Unless someone feels strong, I have no motion.
We're moving on. So, field letter of support is no action. Managed growth, Jeff.
Hey. Alright, um, so, last week, and two board members were, were present during this, that's why we had to minutes approved. The Managed Growth Steering Committee, which consists of representatives from the major boards, Select Board, Board of Health, Planning Board, DPW Chief, uh, Town Planner, Planning Board, et cetera, all representative, and it was chaired by the Managed Growth Steering, I mean, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission chaired it. So, this was an opportunity to review the Phase Two of their study into managed growth in there. So, the February twenty-seventh meeting was a public information session of this steering committee. It was about eighteen residents, but it was streamed live, and I do see that it's been appearing regularly on the Cable Access Channel, and was picked up by the Landmark, as it appeared on the front page of this week's Landmark. And the bullet points in the Landmark were pretty accurate for anybody who wants to be brought back up to speed. So, Ron Baron did a exemplary job. His presentation is posted on the town website, and I ask that the PowerPoint be printed out in notes form and included in everybody's binder in there. So, at the beginning, the goals were identified, that the meeting was to review the process and the findings from this study, to review options available to our community, and to discuss the benefits and drawbacks of the different options in there. So, some takeaways of the presentation that you have in front of you of their study. I'll just give you a synopsis here in, in six, six quick points. Rutland's been growing twenty-seven percent per decade since the nineties. We have four-hundred subdivision parcels approved but not yet built. If all the developable, the, uh, developable land were allowed to be developed, the worst-case scenario would show that Rutland would now have forty-eight-hundred houses, population could exceed thirteen thousand, and the student population would be over twenty-six-hundred students. As discussed, water and sewer are critical. Currently, we are basically up to capacity, with the sewer almost topping over, uh, capacity as we speak. If we were to add these thirty-eight-hundred individuals to the population, and fourteen-hundred new housing units, the water would be over by almost three-hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand gallons per day. Sewer would be over by four-hundred-and-four thousand GPD, if the houses within the Water and Sewer District were not currently connected. Now, this is, this is something that I thought was pretty interesting. The houses that currently exist, currently within our proposed, if a proposed Water and Sewer District, not currently connected, but available to connect, we would immediately be over by forty-eight thousand GPD in water and forty-four thousand GPD in sewer. So I thought those were significant highlights of the study. So, the study also included some options, and there's probably about six takeaways from Central Mass that I highlighted here. The first, we can apply for a new permit with Mass DEP to increase the water draw. Right, there'd be a cost allowed with that, but we would request permission from DEP to up our limit from the draw from Oshkopog. The other half is sewer, the contract is up real soon, uh, we should obviously request an increase there. Tapping into the other resources, such as the Quab and Aqueduct, was, uh, discussed, but didn't go into depth, that's obviously costly, no one's provided any estimates on that, uh, but that is one option. Number four, enact a town growth management bylaw. Uh, the management bylaw would place limits on the number of building permits that can be issued each year. It buys the town some time to plan for and manage impacts of a potential new housing development. Uh, the fifth would be establishing a Water and Sewer District, and that would set a firm limit on the number of Water and Sewer connections that can be made. Delinated area on a zoning map, uh, that marks out the limits of the Water and Sewer expansion. And this can be done by a majority vote of the Planning Board. The Planning Board, uh, leads that, following a public hearing. Uh, sixth option was what he called downzoning, and upzoning, and what that is, basically, it increases the minimum lot size, um, increases the minimum lot sizes outside the existing Water and Sewer area, and provides corresponding density bonuses to encourage development within. So those are the six options that, uh, were highlighted by Central Mass. So, uh, with the exception of tapping into the Aqueduct, I think all the other options are very viable and for discussion in there. We're going to have a, there are some follow-up items, uh, that Ron is gonna run down for us, so our next meeting of the Managed Growth Steering Committee is gonna be March fourteenth, six-thirty, in the Lower Library. If you have any questions, concerns, I can take them back to the meeting. You're always, uh, welcome to, to attend. Take a look at the presentation, and it's also streamed on the Access Channel, if you want it brought up to speed, but Ron was very informative on his information. There was one, I had one follow-up question that I corresponded with him, and he gave me an answer today. And the question was about, what type of bylaw can we go for? And I specifically asked, can we go for a general bylaw, as opposed to a zoning bylaw? And Ron replied today. He said that in reference to the, uh, the general bylaw, he's yet to see it implemented as anything but a zoning bylaw. Uh, he believes an argument could be made that it's, if, it's affecting the issuance of permits and not use. For example, when you use your land, rather than how you use your land. However, Central Mass wouldn't recommend going that route without an opinion from Town Council. So, any questions?
No, I mean, it was obviously a lot of information.
Lot of info.
I don't know if anybody followed this on social media, but, uh, the headline, um, for the Landmark was a little bit concerning, um, not the, not the headline in the print paper, but the headline on, um, on the internet was "Growth Management Group Outlines Options in Rutland." And so, we had forty-six very angry comments. If that gives us some sense of where the town is headed right now. All very, sort of jumping to a conclusion of, oh, they're looking to build as much as they can, because of the way the headline read, and...
Yeah, yeah, I noticed that, it was like, maybe, and I saw that you...
I tried.
You tried, but yeah, I think they took it the wrong way, like, yeah, we're looking to fill up the space, but...
I have a question for our options, is it one, or can we choose multiple options?
Oh, yeah, 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 all of them.
I was, I mean...
All of the above, with the exception of tapping in, because we don't have enough info and costs and all that, so...
I think we were working, we, at one point, I think before Joe came, Gary was working on getting some, you know, high-level numbers, but I think it's probably astronomically expensive.
Right, yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not there...
Right.
Yet, um...
Tapping into the Quab and Aqueduct for backup water, or switch off of...
We're working on a gas for backup water right now. I mean, what's it to go down the road to taking the Aqueduct?
Are you looking at the well at Rutland Heights?
Are you looking at the well at Rutland Heights?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
We'll put in.
The other comment that was made was if we ended up using that well, which everybody has been talking about anecdotally for years, we would end up not being able to use the rest of that property because you would need so much acreage protection around it.
Okay. Yeah.
So why we were thinking about it for so long in retrospect makes me.
So I mean, there's some, some things that we can do immediately. I mean, the, uh, the obvious is that it can, it's intended to be at the annual town meeting, which gives us a deadline if we wanted to do some sort of a, a bylaw.
If I read this right, if we set a, um, water and sewer, sewer district.
Yep.
That the planning board can change the, the size and the location of the borders of the district at any time.
Actually, they set the district, which was news to me.
Yeah.
I have to be honest.
Yeah. Said it was a planning board.
Yeah.
Because it deals with growth.
So they set the district and they can change it at any time.
Then we manage the district that they set.
Yes.
And going back into memory land, because I like town history in there, I, uh, I asked Anita for the minutes of the events surrounding the 2002 effort.
Oh, God.
Two in there. So I have for anybody who's interested.
What was the vote? We always talk about how it was.
Yeah. And, and I cited that at the, uh, I did cite that at the, uh, last week's meeting. So a motion, a motion was made. Well, let's, let's back it up a little bit. There was a lot of discussion that I thought was interesting that the finance committee recommended unfavorably, unfavorably.
Because Clee Blair was on the finance committee. Just saying.
I was going to be more subtle, but yeah. Um, so they, they recommended unfavorably on there and, uh, the reason was, they gave a reason. They did not recommend the article because, uh, they have not seen any figures as to how this would affect the town financially. And then there was a discussion. So going, going forward, so they asked for a paper ballot. So the hands, uh, vote was initially 20, 264, 164 against. They asked for a paper ballot and it dropped down to 240 yes and 178 no. So it, it didn't get the two thirds, but it got the majority.
No, that was the vote for paper ballot. The motion for a paper ballot failed.
The paper ballot was used. Town meeting voted and ballots were counted. Motion made for paper ballot, motion seconded, moderator called for standing vote.
Moderator called for us.
And if you want to know who the moderator was, I have that information too.
I thought paper ballot failed.
No, uh, Mr. Canacchio.
Not back then. We weren't even on the board back then.
Well, I was at that meeting though.
Yeah, I was too.
Absolutely at that meeting.
So, and then the other thing that I found interesting from the archives here. So there was a public hearing and that was through the planning board again, right? So, um, gentleman from the finance committee, uh, expressed that Mr. Gangl stated that a, a lot of what he was planning to express. He further stated, "Growth has not been bad for Rutland and if we stop now, people in town will have to pay more taxes." Thinks the bylaw should be thrown out. So, um, so I submit now that we have Central Mass's study and then we have 17 years, hence, uh, the last attempt in there that we can look at cause and effect, um, that obviously didn't exhibit A as my tax bill. Uh, in 2002, I wasn't living here, but I was paying my dad's taxes and, uh, it was nowhere even close to the astronomical amount that we're paying right now. So that, that is patently false, that statement in there. So it hasn't been, uh, it hasn't been a, an instrument for lowering our taxes in there. So, and I.
It could have, but the town was being seduced into the idea that new growth would continue in the, in the way that it was and that it would never catch up with us. But the problem is every bit of new growth in Rutland ends up costing the town more in services than it does in income from taxes.
Yeah. And I think the study, the Central Mass study is showing, it's not that the growth itself is bad, but it's the students, um, that come with certain growth that adds to the, uh, the tax base because it's $12,000 per student roughly into the school system. So.
I know that was one.
You're already behind with one kid.
One of my questions, not at this last, um, managed growth meeting, but previously was, I thought that they were being conservative with the estimate of the number of students moving in, potentially moving into town, given that a majority of the new constructions are three, four bedroom houses. They, I think, had been, at one point had been operating on like 1.5 or 1.8.
Right.
Kids, children per house and.
Point seven even. They were doing 2.7, assuming that it's a nucleus family of father and, and, and mother in there. Point seven. It's low ball on it right there. So.
I was worried that they were significantly, that those numbers were significantly underestimating what the.
Yeah. I think so too.
Taxes. The, yeah.
So assuming, uh, you have this meeting coming up this week and I know you have a goal of trying to get something together in time for a town meeting. We have another, what are we up to now? Like five weeks before we have to actually get something onto the town meeting warrant?
Well, we're at a push-pull type of, uh, situation right now where we're taking the data. You guys are seeing it. They are waiting to hear, what's, what's the pleasure of the board? Which, where, where do we want them to go? Which option, if any? Um, and then they will start, or they, I mean, Ron, will start, uh, drafting up something for us. But they would, I think at this point, we should try to decide which, uh, which direction we like, straw vote, whatever.
So the goal from, you know, going back to Margaret was getting a managed growth bylaw.
Yep.
In some form onto this May's annual town meeting.
Yep.
So I guess the question is, does the board want to give some sort of rough framework to CMRPC for your meeting this week?
Yep. And I have the, uh, I have the draft of the last attempt in there.
Right.
And what, uh, Central Mass was saying is that the number of permits to be pulled can't just be arbitrary. It has to be based.
Right.
On, on something. And I think the study itself and the 17-year gap in there, we have a good basis for what we think we can, can absorb, if any. Um, but it's, it's up to us to, to provide some, some direction and some discussion on that. Um, but I do have the wording of the last few attempts.
And could you just clarify again what they said, general versus zoning? They recommended which?
Um, right here, I wrote it down for you.
Sounded like they recommended zoning rather than general.
Yeah. And because obviously a general would be good, but he's like, uh, he doesn't, he doesn't know of any examples, which was kind of surprising that nobody else has tried that. Uh, when you're like, oh, there's got to be somebody out there. So this is what he said. Yeah.
Somebody said Holden has one in place and it's zoning. Who told me that?
I don't know.
I didn't mean it like that.
Um.
Let me know who told you.
I know.
I think it was said at the managed growth meeting.
Oh, maybe.
Last week from CMRPC that Holden has a zoning bylaw.
So this is, this is our current by, zoning bylaw right here. This is what was put forward back in May of 2002, which was pretty accurate. I mean, I think if we just go for the, go for the same thing and then we adjust the numbers accordingly, I think 50, they were asking for 56, um, with five seniors. I think that's ridiculously high. If we can have a discussion on what we think a reasonable number is justified, uh, by the study, put that forward to the steering committee and then we come back with this. Now here is the, uh, the article. Want to read it? It's only a couple of sentences.
Good. Go right ahead.
All right. Um, so the article that went forth in 2002, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Rutland by adding a new section entitled Phase Growth, the purpose of which is to ensure orderly growth and development and that the issuance of building permits for new construction will be consistent with the town's capacity to accommodate new development and to provide the services needed to support that development. A copy of the proposed bylaw amendment is on file and available for inspection at the offices of the Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, or take any action in relation thereto." So that was the article. It doesn't even mention a number. I think that's.
I know, um.
Kind of a.
Hubbardston has a zoning bylaw that limits it to 28 houses a year, but it's sunset. So it has to be renewed every five years at town meeting. Um, but just as another example of a town that borders us.
So.
So we can go with whatever that we did last time.
Except it's not exactly we. So we need to get the planning board on board with this and they're meeting tomorrow, but it's obviously not on their agenda. Why would it be? Um.
Couple of the, first, you have to determine a number too. And you have to justify.
Right. Exactly.
How you came up with that number and why?
I actually think that's the last thing. I think if we have the framework of a bylaw and the planning board's zoning subcommittee working on it, the plugin of that number is going to end up coming from a lot of professionals who are getting us a lot of statistical data. So we can get that number in there and base it on, as you're saying, the statistical data that we end up with, which we have a lot of it now, but I know he was talking as well about looking into school numbers.
Yep.
They had done for Holden. So we don't have all of it yet. Um, maybe even some of, you know, the stuff that Joe's working on with water sewer. I, I think we'll have enough data to plug a number in. But, um, at this point, we're looking at a very aggressive concurrent schedule with planning board.
Yeah.
If this is something that's going to move forward as a zoning bylaw, meaning month of April, and we're going to have to back into a public hearing to have prior, um, is it 30 days prior? Yeah. So.
Should we ask for some sort of a joint meeting with planning?
Yeah.
Now that we know it's.
Sooner rather than later.
Zoning. I mean.
Sooner.
Yeah.
We can still try the general, uh, if we bounce it off a council, but they don't have any.
Right.
Would the town also consider doing the up zoning, down zoning, whatever, which is adjusting the minimum.
Lot size?
Lot size in addition to.
No, that would be for any lots that are not currently approved. So anyone that are currently approved would be grandfathered with that.
Right.
And that number is it? 400?
For.
The presentation I thought said 300, but whatever.
It was 300 with another 100, um.
Pending.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that's probably a second step after the water sewer district is set. And then you sit there and say, okay, you've got a district outside of the district. There can no longer be any hookups. We're going to do this to the lot size, but in exchange, we're going to go within the district and do this. I don't, I don't know.
Um, so let me go over the quick options again. What we.
Just also for confirmation, the planning board is the one.
Who's, who'd be the one setting a district if any for the.
And could adjust the district as.
As.
They voted.
Some of these, some of these options aren't as time critical as coming up on the town meeting. They've been applying for a permit with DEP and the sewer contract. Okay? That's.
A year out.
Push that a little bit, right? The tapping of the resources, we need to table that for now. Um, so.
I really think the only thing that's critical for town meeting would be any tor, any type of building permit cap.
Right.
Whether it's a moratorium for a new, uh, interim year, if you will, um, like Marlborough and Agawam did, um, while they were writing their managed growth bylaw, they did a one year moratorium, capping it at 20 permits a year. That way they could find out, study what number works for them or what's not. Um, or you just go forth with that bylaw to begin with. Um, I think that's the main question that has to be asked before town meeting.
Spot on. Um, and the other thing would be the down zoning and up zoning. That would probably be a bylaw.
Yes.
Also, uh, increasing the lot sizes. So that I don't have an example, but I'm sure there's plenty of them.
Oh, yeah.
Central Mass can do that.
Gardner has one. You have to have a minimum acre. In certain, if you're zoned within a certain amount, you have to have a minimum of an acre in some places.
I think Sterling has a minimum acreage of a, a larger amount because that's how, I think how they had done some of their managed.
I think okay, and it's three acres, right? Three?
Yeah. Joe, I know you were just about to say something too.
Um, there's no guarantee that that sewer agreement will be signed and again. We're putting it in court. It could be, DCR can stall it, Holden can stall it. I'm just cautioning you that there's no guarantee that that's going to be a sewer. It's the same process.
Now, we're just thinking, I mean, for the May 11th deadline, there's really two realistic items. Down zoning, up zoning and setting a number in the.
Both would be a zoning. A moratorium, I'm not sure if that would fall under zoning because it's a temporary number. And to be honest, that surprised me when C, you said CMRPC said no one else had tried that because I think to me that's what the moratorium is, is a general vote at a town meeting like that.
He also said to bounce it off a council.
Yeah. Again, we can run that off of David too. Um, but I think the reason why he hadn't seen a bylaw like that is because anyone that'd been general like that had been a moratorium while his zoning bylaw was in the works, if that makes sense.
Hmm.
And the only difference is that obviously it's, but for the people who may be watching, a general bylaw only needs 50% at a town meeting. A zoning needs three-fourths.
Yep. Um, so I think we need to, we need to have a, a powwow with planning.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Welcome one or two of you to come with us to the, the next steering committee and, uh, point in a direction here. It is on the agenda. So we can, uh, we have an agenda posted for the steering committee.
Yeah. I think that's mission critical. And getting back to Joe, you know, and some of your answers to, um, the guests tonight, I don't know that the water sewer moratorium extension or not needs to hinge on the results of town meeting. Um, so.
Right. Right.
Right. So I'm, I'm thinking we should also be scheduling at one of our meetings prior to town meeting.
A water sewer.
We'll schedule a, a water commissioner, water sewer commissioner.
I also restarted the communications with Westman Stakes regarding the benefits of districting.
Okay.
Or not districting.
Great.
So they've got specialists in pit house, most of that as well.
Okay.
Just don't have it in.
No, that's fine. I think we just want to, as one thing that is within our purview and something that has been in place for a very specific reason for a finite amount of time, it's probably something that we can handle first and kind of set it aside and get it off the table. It really doesn't need to be part of the discussion should we get our act together and get to the managed growth bylaw at a town meeting. That can stand on its own.
One thing I forgot to mention when we had our comments from the public regarding water and sewer, sewer in particular, it seemed it was implied that we hadn't done a lot of II work. But, um, what I failed to say was influence inflation, what is paid for by sewer revenues and retained earnings department. And over the last couple of years, we've needed to use those to pay bills to transport waste water on the town. So the short answer is regarding II, you can't afford it until the rate is restructured.
I'm sure he will.
I missed that. I'm sorry.
No, he'll, no, I'm sure that information will get to him.
So am I safe to say that the board would support or at least, uh, straw poll of the board right now, um, that we are interested in pushing managed growth with a number to be?
Yes.
Picked and then the down zoning.
Down zoning means increasing the lot size.
I personally think the down zoning could wait. That's a really complicated issue.
Okay. Yep.
We can only probably take on so much.
Pick the one fight?
That's just me.
Pick the one fight?
Pick the one fight.
Yeah, one fight.
Because it's a big fight.
Okay. That's.
So you can make that motion though. This doesn't need to be a straw poll because it's our agenda.
Um, okay. I, I will make a motion that the board support the position, position at this point to bring forward to the managed growth steering committee, pursuing, enacting a town growth management bylaw that places limits on the number of building permits that can be issued each year. Period. That's the motion.
I'll second it.
Any more comments? All in favor?
Hi.
All right. unanimous.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Jeff, it's you again. I'm on to perambulation.
Hey, perambulation. Doing great. Perambulation.
Doing great.
Doing great. Um, so we had a, a, a leadership meeting on March 20th with, uh, we're going to have a leadership meeting on March 20th with, uh, boy cub and girl scout leaders. Uh, we're going to check the status of where everyone is. Uh, they've had some time to think about it, um, and dwell upon where they would like to take their individual opportunities. And, you know, with the absence of the, the storm we just had, maybe, uh, do some pre-scouting in there. But, uh, this is the time to, uh, get some ideas. Uh, we do like the idea of the final cookout at the Treasure Valley Stone and the burial of a time capsule. Everybody seemed to like that idea. I talked to the, um, Historical Society and they are very, very interested, um, in the time capsule idea. Uh, what I don't have to present to the board is the list of individual participants to recognize as assistant town perambulators. I did check with the town clerk on that option and she said that we do have a bylaw that says that anybody sworn needs to be a registered voter, which therefore is 18. So, uh, what I would like. So what I would like to do is, because we have six different teams, maybe the troop leaders have them appointed as the assistants. So on perambulation day, if we do a lot of running around, if I can't hit every, every spot, they could be an official witness. And then the, I didn't want to say children, the scouts would be an honorary assistant in there. So, small point. March nineteenth, I'm gonna be speaking before the Rutland Historical Society about the perambulation project. I met with them at their open house, very supportive. They offered any and all assistance in there. They would offer something for the time capsule. And I asked them to do some research into some of the big names that are popping up on there, some, try to find some heroes in our history in there. So. So that's good. So all, all's fun. We're having fun, yeah. Everybody got a little perambulation packet here if you wanted to see it for each, each team in there. And Abby, I got your photos in there. These are our goals on where we want to do a couple of different options along the way. And, you know, thirty-four stones, different stuff. So if you wanted to look at that. So that's what each scout team got. Thank you. That's it.
As Jeff said, we do have a bylaw that says we can't appoint someone officially until they're the age of eighteen, or registered to vote, rather, which you can't do until you're eighteen. So if you look at those certificates that were assigned by Joe and Sheila. For anyone who's a fan of the show, the office, they are.
Assistant to the region.
Commissioning, yeah. Commissioning rather than appointing the boy scout troops as assistants to the town perambulator rather than assistant town perambulators. And that's our way we can get around that and.
We'll make it a big deal. We'll make it a big deal anyways.
Yeah, exactly.
As, as the perambulation day comes, so now maybe we're looking at April, and again, I would invite the whole board, if you wanted to be so inclined to participate in whenever the perambulation day is, we have six teams, there's five of us. It'll be a big shindig at the tail end there, at the, at the three-way stone. The Treasure Valley Stone's a three-town stone in there, right? Maybe there's gonna be three time capsules for the two, three towns on their side of the stone, right? Like a little peace sign there, Sheila, a little peace sign. Two feet over, two feet down, two feet over, two feet down. Boom. You know what I'm saying?
I do. Peace sign. Okay.
Why not?
All right.
Right? But anyways, and a quick out, and I guess that, the three-way stone there is near the lodge, so it'd be a good little location near the lake.
Okay.
So they're all excited about that, and I'm excited, so it'll be good.
I gotta move on from the fun stuff. So I'm on to not-so-fun sidewalk plowing. You have some pictures, a note from a resident that had also reached out to Jeff and that got forwarded on to us. And you have Joe's response, very complete response, which I'm just gonna jump down to the end. One of the things he suggests is the unpopular, you're certainly right, sidewalk ordinance. We have had this conversation, Joe. The issue we have, and you're, and we're seeing it vividly here in the subdivisions, is that because of the way so many of the subdivisions were designed and created, they don't have sidewalks on both sides in many cases. It's not structured like a normal city block where you can really acknowledge that somebody's sidewalk in front of their property, end to end, is gonna be their responsibility and we're done and we're good. The subdivisions have whatever, you know, yards and yards and yards worth more of, of sidewalk. And who do you allot that to when you start making the ordinance that you must plow your own sidewalk? I can see kind of where you were headed, thinking, well, it would help. But when you think of the distance that a lot of these people have and that half the street has nothing. It's a, it's a tough one for our town. And. Yep.
And then there's the one who doesn't.
Yeah.
So forces them into the street, final point, going out of the bus stop.
I, I think what's frustrating about the letter is the person notes that four to five cars passed by us, some are more considerate than others, and slow down while others speed right by. These are the neighbors. This is not a cut-through neighborhood. These are not people that are driving from Boston on their way somewhere. This is the, the neighborhood. And that the people in the neighborhood don't have the level of consideration that they need to be driving in the winter and, you know, through little neighborhood roads for these kids who are walking was frustrating.
So anyways, I thought you did a very good explanation. I mean, more than was necessary. The other one spells it out. And I flipped it back to him, and I think I included the whole email. I said, thank you. Thank you for explaining it. And I said, we'll bring it up with the meeting. It's certainly a discussion.
The other thing that isn't in here that we asked for was, I called Central Mass Regional Planning to try and come up with how much sidewalk we've seen added in the last ten, twelve years? How much roadway we've actually seen added? Said you could actually put a number on that. Because you've got that much more.
Now, I don't think it was every sidewalk, but it would be the choke point sidewalks that lead up to a major bus stop for everybody's meeting.
Yeah, I mean, Joe, you were right. There are sidewalks that get cleared on a regular basis, Maple Avenue, Main Street, but otherwise.
Those are, those are for walkers.
Those are for walkers.
That's why they're done.
And that's the mile. And I suppose when it comes to it, you know, if the Puma Gasset tip project ever got done, we would be adding those sidewalks. You would then have that whatever half a mile's worth of walkers, but yeah, I.
So I asked to have it on the agenda for a discussion.
Yeah.
Just to put it out there. I mean, obviously, the option is to add more resources so the DPW can address all these hundreds of miles of additional sidewalk.
So you don't want your taxes to go up.
Well, I was afraid that was gonna happen. I'm not saying it.
Or how many more, you know, miles of walk we actually have.
Right, wow. And then, or bylaw discussion about the responsibility of the sidewalk in front of your house.
The last town that had a big fight about this, I think, was Meaton. And it didn't go well. It was a long, drawn-out fight about a sidewalk ordinance. Because what does Worcester have?
They have the ordinance.
They have the ordinance.
But then the question comes into who enforces it?
Yeah.
And does it, it can be neighbor against neighbor and.
Gardner has the ordinance, but only in certain sections of the city. So if you live in a certain number of miles from downtown Gardner or in South Gardner, then you're required, you're in charge of the sidewalk in front of your house. If you live within a mile of the school, it's up for the city to do as a way for us because of the whole state of the school. And then anywhere else in the city, it's either you get to it or you wait for the city to get to you when you can, that thing. So people do things differently.
What about the major bus stop choke points, Joe? Like if, is this, is there a way that we can reasonably fold in existing resources to, you can see, you can see where they all bunch up there. Ten Rod Road, Watson, Vista.
I agree with you.
Madsen.
We'd want the folks who do transportation for the schools to approach us though. I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want us to take over making that assumption. I'd want to have schools come back and answer those questions.
I think that gets tricky. I think at that point, you're really gonna be doing every neighborhood because the elementary schools have more stops than, say, the high school. The high school has a neighborhood stop that's on Main Street, and then they walk down through the neighborhood. Those kids, if those neighborhood roads aren't plowed, are walking in the street the whole way down through. The elementary school kids have more stops, I think, in some of the neighborhoods, but a lot of times, they still have a reasonable walk within the neighborhood. But they're not on, you know, Main Street or on Puma Gasset. They might have two, more stops within a neighborhood or something. So I think if you look at it that way, you're really still looking at having all the sidewalks plowed. But I don't know for sure.
We certainly don't have the resources to do it right now. Anyways, at some point, Joe, if we had a crazy winter and after the storms are over, I know you got the new holder there. I mean, has that ever hit any of the secondary sidewalks? Or is it just, it's just those three roads? Okay. What's your recommendation on the problem?
People shovel their own.
Short of a bylaw?
I mean, I just kind of always grew up that it was.
Responsibility of the person.
Yeah, if you had a sidewalk in front of your house, you shoveled it. That's, I mean, that was how, and that means, you know, dealing with all the heavy plow snow and everything also. But that's how it was growing up, and that's how it was when I was in Worcester, and that's what we did when I was in other places. We don't have a sidewalk in front of our house now, so.
Neither do I, but that's all right.
But that was just always my assumption. I don't, I mean.
I grew up shoveling the sidewalk because of the ordinance, and it was a city, and it's just so different here.
What do other towns do? What's Holden do?
I can't think of any smaller town that has anything for sidewalks. I really can't. We can look it up.
We table it and then just plant the seed out there. I think the season's done, obviously. We just keep up the good work.
No, but try and get you some length of how much sidewalk you actually have.
It's such a rabbit hole when we start asking those questions. Because I'd wanna know length. I'd wanna know how much of it is. You know, we have some that really needs to be repaired. It's not ADA. And then we have sidewalk that's only on one side of the road. How many of them are actually both sides? So you're doing right, the double sidewalks? I don't know how many. When would the questions stop? I'm not saying we shouldn't ask.
I just think linear feet of walk would be fine.
Thanks, Joe.
I didn't realize that the town only did those three roads.
It's it.
It's kind of interesting.
And sometimes they don't get done till after the storm, or even, you know, well after the storm.
Yeah, when you get to.
Right.
Have they been done in time for school?
We make every effort.
I know Holden's not even done in time for school. A lot of times, when I'm driving to work well after the storm, right in front of the high school, they're still just haven't even done it.
Really?
Yeah. So I think Holden has a lot more walkers all around town than we do, and they're not in, not done in time for school.
And is this to say the parents should be walking behind these kids or not?
I know you wanna table it, but there's, I mean, you could always put the word out to the people who live there, especially people with, you know, please try and help keep a kid safe. Please clear your walk. Try and get some outreach. You can always do that too.
And slow down in your neighborhoods.
In winter, when you can't, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Get someone when the kids are out there in the place.
I know. All right. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Under old business, we have the Arrowhead Drive easements that need to be signed. Do you have anything to tell us, Mike?
Yeah, I included a email that I received from attorney Everett from KP Law after sending the concerns that were raised at the last meeting with regard to the statement that said returning it to its original condition. Explaining why that was put in there, but understanding the confusion that could be caused. So her suggestion is either to add the section that you see here in quotations that starts with "in return" for the easements described herein and then ends with "as nearly as possible at the expense of the town." She did say that because, these are easements for a road that was accepted by the fall town meeting, and because of that, we have a timeline as to when these easements can be recorded, which is the nineteenth. So since the board will not be meeting between now and next Tuesday, she said to either take a look at this and have the board, board make a motion to either approve without that language completely or with the change to this presented language that she has here. More vote down if that's the desire of the board. But if this easement is to be recorded, the vote needs to happen at tonight's meeting. Sewer easement premises, drain easement, and utility easements. Correct.
In return for the easements described herein, the town agrees that any area within the utility easement premises, sewer easement premises, or the drainage easement premises damaged by the town's exercise of the rights granted herein will be restored to its original condition as nearly as possible at the expense of the town.
So as she said, she can either revise it to that or just delete this provision in its entirety.
And she didn't have a recommendation?
She said it was pretty much the same result either way. Because if we go on and we damage someone's lawn, then it's up to, then we'd fix it. So this is just making sure that we go out and fix it if we drive a truck on someone's lawn and leave tire marks and tear up their lawn.
Do you have a thought?
I'm fine with the way it is now. If that's their explanation.
You are. So is it more protective to the town to take it out completely or leave it in?
Or this is, so there's three. There's this amended version.
Right.
The one that's currently in there, or remove that clause completely.
Thoughts?
I don't see much of a difference between the original version and this version because I thought the concern was original condition, and that's, phrase is still in this amended version. It.
Yeah, it's just with the email at top that explains what that means.
Right, right. And so.
We have advice from town council. Will you take it? You don't, right?
Well, she gave us two options. Completely different. Three. So leave it as is, delete it completely, or take the edits. I certainly, in reading it over again, I actually like how she edited it. Because the way it read before was, "In return for the easements described herein, the town agrees that any area disturbed by the town's exercise of the rights granted herein will be restored."
Where it's, here, rather, now it shows where that disruption has to happen.
Yep. I think I like her edits.
She said she recommends that we sign it. Assure the easement will contain revised language.
She's recommending that we sign it so that we meet the deadline. But then she just needs to know the language so that she can change the language of the content. But she'll have the signature pages.
Yeah.
I'll make, if, is there more, because I'll make a motion that we include her edits to define with, in the utility easement premise, the sewer easement premises or the drainage easement premises damaged by the town's exercise of rights. I'll make a motion that we accept her edits.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Hi. Do we need a motion now to sign that? I should have done it together, I guess. Sorry. Make a motion to sign with the, sign the Arrowhead easement with the addition of the edit.
Second.
All in favor? Great. So three copies. I think it's just you two. Thank you very much. Annual Town Report dedication.
Jeff, these came from you.
Yeah.
This was mine.
Jeff, this was amazing and how, how we didn't think of that immediately. I don't know.
I, um. It's, it's still open for nominations to the annual town report. So I wanted to respectfully nominate two very notable women whom the community lost this year. They were, they were, they were very prominent with the Rutland Historical Society. And by the, I'm talking about Mrs. Janet Barakian and Helen Viner, both of whom passed away in two thousand and eighteen. Both Janet and Helen were loyal, longtime residents of Rutland, having served distinctly on the Rutland Historical Society for many, many years, among many other services to the town. We feel the loss of these two women. Their life stories and the excerpts were summarized below with my nomination. And for discussion, otherwise, I would move to nominate the annual town report to these dearly departed women.
I'll second that.
So just to clarify, are we dedicating the report or are we doing an in memoriam? Or is it an in memoriam dedication?
I'm thinking it's an in memoriam dedication.
Is that good?
Very nice.
Great.
Thank you.
Comments?
I have not discussed this nomination with your family members in there. Maybe that someone representative of the town could.
Sure.
Okay.
You can send them a letter.
Very nice.
We'll mark that down so we make sure to do that again this year.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Thanks, everyone.
Onward, the what chooses it meeting and budget. That made it to the paper as well. I think we all know the number that they requested. We have not heard anything different. They are actually meeting right now. Tonight's the night?
Yep.
Yeah, tonight's their night to vote on their final budget. We did get a minor reduction that I think we just got sent today in the Bay Path budget, right?
Yes, yep.
Minor.
Very minor, but minor.
Okay.
There is a letter included in your. There is a letter included in your packet that outlined the request that a couple of the selectmen made last week at the meeting. Just to formalize the request, if the board still chooses, as was requested. The request, for those of you that weren't there or weren't able to watch it, or weren't able to watch it because it wasn't televised, was that our increase in, for the schools, was $500,000 total. The request was made that the school consider the possibility of reducing their entire budget by $600,000, which would come about to a ballpark $150,000 reduction for the town, and as a result, basically meet us in the middle with the ballpark $300,000 that we're looking at right now.
Minus the $250 for the ball field, we're the only fine, 50 large.
Well, we wouldn't get the full $250 in the ball field, but...
I'd like to make a motion that we send this letter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And also have Mike Nicholson sign it as town administrator.
Perfect. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I say a word, Mike?
Thank you.
Town space.
We are meeting with department heads tomorrow morning to go over our new policy for reserving town spaces here. We, I sent out an email to all town department heads two-ish, two and a half-ish weeks ago. That might have been Laura. Was that you? Okay. Basically asking for a list of all reservable spaces in town buildings and their current operating hours. Now that that list has been compiled, we are looking at a new way to have it run while we're waiting in the interim. Once we get our update from Civic Plus for our town website, we'll be able to do it via an online form. But while we're waiting for that to be implemented, in order to clarify how things are going, it'll go through the administrator's office. With the staffing changes, we actually have two massive calendar whiteboards that are now freed up, so we can, as spaces get reserved, mark down what spaces are reserved for when and what time, and so on from there, and keep a running list going, and people can call us and ask. And then we'd coordinate with the departments that oversee these rooms, and how that would go. So that is where we currently are in that. Again, it's still a work in progress, but as an update, because it was brought up at the, a couple meetings ago.
I have a, I have a question. How will it work? Has it been determined how far in advance, like, town boards, commissions can book versus? Because I think the-
The library has a-
Hangup had been town or organizations affiliated with the town, but not kind of under the town boards and commissions.
That's an interesting question, and it's a good question to ask, too. The, depending on where you go currently in the town, it depends on what type of time length you need to reserve. If you're here at the library, you can book things up to three months out? Okay, that's, you can book, I'm pretty sure it's three months out you can book. If you go to the wood studio, it's whenever you write your name on the calendar that's there. So this is just a way to make a uniform process across town buildings. If someone's not associated with the town as an official town board or group, it's common practice to ask for at least some type of a waiver that gets signed, or a release of liability, which makes sense if you ask me. If you want to reserve it, you come in and you sign the form, and then you can leave. So again, this is a part of, that's part of the whole work in progress that we'll be working out, is finding out at tomorrow's department head meeting, what's your current process for reserving these rooms? And what have you done in the past? What are people used to? And then finding the best pieces of each of these options and working with them.
Thank you. Pinewood Derby results.
We've got the, Paul Madsen can zoom in on her right here. This is Selectman one. Selectman one came in fourth. I think we had a lot of wind drag or something because of the gavel on the front in there, but we gave it a mighty show. And although we did beat the DPW, only because Superintendent said that his Pinewood Derby car had over 200,000 miles on it and needed some work. Which came in fifth. Fantastic day. We had a great showing. Leo was there, Mike was there. We had a good representation. We did the proclamation, and they really liked that. Got some great photos, got some good slow-mo videos in there that's been popping around on the Facebook in there. But it was just a, just a really good day, good interaction. The winner, first place, was Chief Monaco in his black and white. It was just a good time, good public, community, community type of event that we had in there. It was nice to be invited to that. Hope we get invited next year. I already have some great ideas, so. So that being said, so this was our submission in there, and I'd love to be able to see if we can maybe hang it somewhere in the Selectman's annex.
Yeah, we'll find a place.
To you, so.
Yeah, the, I did make sure to remind Chief Monaco, who came in first, and Chief Knight, who came in second, that in any motorcade, the flashes and sounds go first, and then the important people go after that. So we did make sure that that was clear.
So I'm still cleaning up the mess?
No, apparently, regional dispatches. What happened there?
They no-showed. I don't know if he got the memo. Did he get the memo?
He got his birthday, I think.
Oh, okay. But the kids themselves had some really great, great cars. And there was some really-
Oh, they were great, yeah.
Creative stuff, you know?
That's really good.
Yeah, it was, it was a good day.
Uh, all right, there's no correspondence? No, yes, is there?
Well, I, there's something I forgot to say in my update that relates to correspondence that our office received, so if you want to count that, you can count that if not. I got a phone call the other day from the principal of Holy Family Academy. It's a small parochial school in Gardner, informing me that there's a couple of students there from Rutland who are attending school there, and then invited me to go visit the school this afternoon. Every year, they do what's their government week, and what it is is where you know, you have your normal student government elections. You have your class president, you have your student council, and so on from there. As a way to help teach students civics and local government, they have their students in their seventh and eighth grade run for municipal positions. So you have students running for, well, it's in Gardner, so they have students running for mayor, students running for city council, student running for, uh, city council, student running for school committee. And then they sit everyone down and they teach them different issues that local governments are facing. Water sewer rates, potholes, plowing, things like that. Thank you, Joe, for the list of ideas that I could just say off the top of my head right there. And give the kids a week to go make a campaign, and then they run. If you win, you get the position in the school that year. If you don't win or you don't run, then you're appointed to a department head position, or a staff position, or a fireman, or a policeman. And then everyone in the seventh and eighth grade has something that they're assigned to, and then they go spend an afternoon with the people who actually hold that job in the real world to see what it's like, and they, it's a way to help them start out to see how local government affects them, even as a middle schooler. And then the six, seventh, and eighth graders all vote on who they do that. So I just thought that was a neat thing. They said they'd never had someone from a town perspective before. It's always been city because it's in Gardner, so they reached out to me and asked if I could-
Nice.
-talk about town stuff. So I thought that was neat.
Very nice.
Involve some Rutland kids, and I thought it was different, and a cool way to think outside the box.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that.
It'll be interesting now that civics is required, how the, how Wachusett ends up looking at it.
Yeah.
I get a motion to go into executive session for two reasons to return for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for two reasons. Reason number one, actually, reason number two, is reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And for executive session, reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, with only a return to open meeting for adjournment.
Chair so declares, roll call.
Glock aye.
Walker aye.
Whitman aye.
Stolling zike.
Deby, thank you.